Make note of the time. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for May 21st, 2024. Ms. Teresa, would you do the roll call?
Sure. Alderman Hayden?
Here.
Alderman Walters?
Here.
Alderman Asia? Alderman Myers?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Yeah.
Alderman Van Bussker?
Here.
Alderman Krezak?
Here.
All right, and it was, the time was 6:31 when called the meeting to order. So, approval of the May 7th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Motion by Hayden and second by Myers. Call the roll, please. Do we have any comments or thoughts? Okay, hearing them, please call the roll.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Krezak?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Bussker?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Actually, I need to change mine. I was absent, so I will not vote on that for tonight.
You'll abstain?
Yes, please. Thank you. All right, so we have a KC ATA presentation.
Good evening. Before you is a map that was requested showing exactly where the, sorry, I'm just trying to get, where the various stops are along the route, the fixed route of 28. Before I get to that, let me just talk about what you all decided or discussed at the meeting on May 7th, which was consideration between Iris and the Flex. Flex is what the city has been paying for in the past. Iris is what KC ATA is proposing to replace it with. You can see the benefits of both, which we covered at the last meeting. Iris provides seven days a week service versus Flex only provides Monday through Friday and limited hours. A question had been asked of staff if someone were able to take Iris throughout the Kansas City metro. Want to clarify, it would not be Kansas City metro. It would be within Kansas City, Missouri, Liberty, Gladstone, Riverside, and any future communities that would add the program as well. The next piece was about where they could be dropped off and scheduling. Currently, the Flex does not allow for transportation to the airport. Iris would include that within the programming features. If you ride Iris or use Iris outside of Raytown, then a fee would be applied according to what community. That fee is a one-way fee, so every time you use it to and from, you would be charged accordingly, just to clarify that. And then the proposed annual cost, which was a 12-month contract, not the full contract we're talking about period-wise right now, but just a 12-month contract would be $84,000 for Iris. If you're wanting to do the Flex, then it would be $123,759 for the city of Raytown because Kansas City, Missouri is no longer funding their portion of Flex. So, we asked just to have an indication so we would know how to move forward with potential negotiations, and the majority of the board indicated they would support Iris over the Flex services. So tonight, what we're trying to go in more detail about is whether or not the board would want to give staff direction to negotiate any fixed routes in addition to the Iris. And so, before you is a map showing the stops within Raytown are the white dots. The black dots are the ones that are in Kansas City, Missouri that are along the Route 28, which is known as the Blue Ridge, which runs weekdays and Saturdays. Currently, the total cost after federal and state reductions that are applied, the price would be to Raytown, $76,829. That is calculated on miles driven within the municipality and total hours of operations, assuming that the zero fare policy remains in place. This one picks up more frequently. We did previously talk about Route 29, but at this current time, the future of 29 is in question, so it's not staff's position to encourage you to consider that as an option. So the next one is Route 63, which, as you can tell on the map, and apologize, let me get the lighting better so you can see it a little bit better. A portion of it is in Raytown. The rest of it is transportation into Kansas City, and the proposed cost for that for a 12-month period after federal and state would be $41,707. Staff received several questions, so I'm not going to read these in great detail, but I will hit the highlights of it. If the zero fare policy does not remain, will Raytown incur any additional capital costs for fixed bus routes during our contract term? The ATA, KCATA said that they did not anticipate Raytown having any additional capital cost, whether there's a fare or not. So what we would negotiate would be according to the terms of the agreement at that time. If we choose Iris over the Flex, would we need to pay for a fixed route? No, we don't have to. It's just that at this current time, if you are so desiring, we need to get that into the contract that we bring before you for consideration that starts July 1st. We can always go back and negotiate or pick up at a later time at the new fiscal year, but then that subjects you to rate increases, cost increases of operations and things of that nature. So we're trying to really, right now, talk about a term of July 1st of 2024 through all of next fiscal year with the caveat, you know, subject to the budget approval therefore. It was mentioned at the last meeting that Route 28 has permanent bus stops along Blue Ridge on the Kansas City side. So we've provided you a map, trying to give better information because the majority of the north and southbound stops in Ray, on the Raytown portion, actually all fall within Raytown. There's very few of them, actually, that are in the Kansas City, Missouri, on the Raytown section of that. So that's why we gave each one of you a copy of the highlighted stops. Question had been asked about the fare, and I think I've answered that already, that any fare that's being charged is a one-way because they don't know if you're going to be round trip, when you're going to be round trip. So you're being charged at $4 when you travel outside of Raytown for a one-way. It was also asked if it's being offered, or in discussions, we need the other municipalities such as Lee Summit, Independence, and Blue Springs. At this current time, they've spoken to Lee Summit, but Lee Summit is going to stay with their current services, and they do have an Oates service, so they're not looking to switch that. Independence has an RFP out on, right now, for consideration on fixed routes and on-demand services. And then Blue Springs, right now, is not engaged regarding this matter because they've already, they recently just locked in a contract, so they're not really up for another round of negotiations anytime soon. So I summarize for you that Iris, they're quoting $84,000 for the annual cost, so if it were for the full term that we're asking for, you'd be looking at $112,000. In addition to that, then we start talking about the fixed routes. So fixed route for 28 for the same contract term would be an additional $102,480. 63, if you decided you wanted to do both a north-south and an east-west, then you, the Route 63 alone for the same contract term would be $55,616. So that kind of summarizes the information I had given you on May 7th. The numbers have not changed since then, it's still the same numbers, and I can, I'll leave that up for you. We do have members of the ATA staff here to answer questions about the route, about the services of Iris, and I'm thinking, I went through all of the questions that I'd received and tried to give you better information. There was one question asked about, could we get ridership numbers? We provided those two months ago as to the most current ridership numbers that ATA was supposed to be able to provide. Those were not for Iris because we don't have Iris in Raytown, so we're not able to give you ridership numbers, broke it out for Iris. We did give you numbers for Flex, and we did give numbers for each of the fixed routes, broken out between Raytown and Kansas City, Missouri. So we didn't want to take up your time tonight to go back over all that detail, since we'd already covered that just a few months ago for third quarter and fourth quarter. So at this time, we don't need to have questions.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, I do have a number of questions. On the map that you've shown us that we have in front of us, it shows all these white dots. I assume those are dots that are considered to be in the Raytown route? Okay? There are signs on the other side of Blue Ridge cutoff, are you aware of that?
I am. I'm pretty certain, based on the geographical boundaries of Raytown, that it does actually go onto both sides of that street.
So there are, there are stops on the, on the west side of Blue Ridge cutoff?
Correct, and those, I believe, are also included in Raytown.
This map shows them all being on the east side, and...
No, they're, I mean, the dots are just close together. There, there's, there's...
No, there's, there's the boundary of Raytown right there, and they're all over here. I mean, it's very clear.
Oh, but that, so that's on the opposite side of, so that boundary goes further than the road. Your boundary encompasses both east and west.
I'm well aware where our boundary goes. It goes about, I think, 50 yards over 60, something like that.
Sure.
And that's, that's where your route is. So my question is, are you still going to be running buses on that north-south, south section of Blue Ridge on the west side?
So we're not, right now, no plan changes to the routing of the 28?
There are no, no changes, so if we decide not to go with it, you'll still have a bus riding along the west side?
We would probably go into planning and talk about what we would want to do and have contact with our other community partners that pay for the 28. So I'm not at liberty right now to make that a certain...
Well, most of your riders, I would think theoretically, would be from Kansas City since it is on the west side of Blue Ridge.
Sure.
So who are you going to negotiate with?
We would be talking with Kansas City, Missouri about how they would want that route to look. There's a potential that we would still run the bus through there if you decided not to, not to fund the 28. We've done a similar thing with the 201, as it is the most direct route to get from Kansas City, Missouri, south of the river, through north Kansas City, through Gladstone, Missouri, and then to Kansas City, Missouri, north of the river. We still run on North Oak, and we just do not open our doors as it goes through Gladstone. And so that would be an option, but...
I understand that, so you don't run, you don't open the doors on the east side of Blue Ridge, but on the west side of Blue Ridge, doors still get opened?
No, so for the, the, you're at, these stops that are in white?
Yes.
Those are stop pairs that are all within Raytown. So we, if you elected not to fund the 28 and we kept the routing the same, there is, we would most likely run our buses, doors closed, through that section, and then once we got in, out of Raytown, we would begin opening our doors again at those stops.
Okay. If you look at the map down here, at the south end, beginning at about approximately Mount Olivet Cemetery, and they are, become black dots as opposed to white dots?
The black dots, we would still open our doors at those black dots.
You realize that that's the same situation that you have all the way north to the northern edge of Raytown? You're riding on Blue Ridge, which is a Raytown street?
Yes.
Okay, so why would you stop picking up people on the north, on the west side of the street here, but not on this section down here?
I think there might be some miscommunication about, we would run closed doors through portions of Raytown Road. If there was a situation where the stop pair included one stop that was in Kansas City, Missouri, and the other pair in Raytown, we would open doors for both those stops. Both of, both of those stops.
You're not going down Raytown Road.
I'm saying through Raytown.
Through Raytown, on, okay, but this is the perimeter of Raytown. So I'm confused in that I'm not sure if you're going to be picking up people on the west side of Raytown.
Well, I can, I can be very clear. If there, if there is a situation, any stop where both stops are in Raytown, and you elect not to fund the 28, we would not pick up at any stops that were both pairs were in Raytown. Let's say if there was a, a location where one stop on one side of the street was in Kansas City, Missouri, and the other stop, its pair was in Raytown, both those stops would have service, including the stop in Raytown and including the stop in Kansas City, Missouri.
So that, whether or not we agree to the agreement?
Correct.
Okay, so we really don't lose anything if we don't agree?
No, you do. If you see that entire portion of those white dots?
Yes, sir.
All of those white dots, being on both the east and west side of the road, are within the municipal boundaries of Raytown. So those stops would not have service if you elected not to fund the 28. And if you want, we could, we could go into more investigation of those, but these, these municipal boundaries...
I really think you should. At least half of your operation is picking up people from Kansas City. You're doing this to your own people.
No, so I, I feel like you're being a little bit combative and argumentative. I'm letting you know that these stops in white are within the, only Raytown. Yes, there are people in Kansas City, Missouri that come over and use those stops, but they're within the boundaries of Raytown.
They don't cross into Raytown proper, into the neighborhoods in Raytown. They don't come across to the east side of Raytown to pick up the bus. There are bus stops on the west side of Blue Ridge also.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
The ones on the west side are only being used for southbound traffic. So to get northbound, they have to come into Raytown to catch the stops for northbound. Then when you come back through, they're using the, the ones you're referring to, the few that are in, those are going to be for southbound pickups and drop-offs. But if they're wanting to go northbound, they have to come into Raytown. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that clarifies it very well. Thank you. One other question, having this is actually a question in a different direction. You say that we have received all the fare detail of what we're paying, but I don't have a, what I'd like to see would be a cost per rider.
When asked, that's not exactly the way it can be broken out because we're giving ridership numbers as the person enters and gets off, so it's not the same person every trip. And so it's a little bit harder to do it that way. That's why they do the numbers the way they do, it's by the miles and the hours spent in the city limits.
Then that's at best an estimate.
If you, if you are interested in those numbers, it's, it's very difficult and kind of piecemeal to just talk about it just for Raytown, but if you go online to ridekc.org and look at our dashboard, there is a cost per rider metric. I believe it's on the fourth page of that dashboard that is updated monthly, that is from a whole system, so that might give you an idea, and it is broken out by route, so you would be able to look at it.
Would we, would we be able to accomplish this simply by putting somebody on the bus and counting the people as they get on and off?
So we, we've given you ridership numbers, so you should have that, I believe, that has been delivered to you. So I don't believe that there's a need for that. All passengers that have been, that get on our bus and off our bus are counted automatically every time.
I know, I know that they're automatically counted, but you're not being able to tell us how many are going into Raytown and how many are not?
Oh, that's, so if you wanted to do that, that would take a bit more of an intense audit, and the reason that we don't have that at this point is because all of our riders are basically anonymous at this point. There's no accounts to ride the bus, there's nothing like that, so we, we wouldn't be able to tell you the same person that gets on the bus at Raytown where exactly they get off. We just have anonymous data that this many people get on here, this many people get off here.
We need to proceed with further discussion.
Well...
Other people have, we have 10 minutes left.
Well, then we should have to carry it over after that.
Is your question answered?
Not really, because I don't have an answer as to how many people are going, what's costing us per rider. I do know in Lee Summit, they've actually put a man on the bus to count the people that came on and off the bus, and that was fairly accurate. So I...
Did they ask that, so that exact person where they were, they basically asked, said person number one got on here and then person number one got off here? Because I, I don't know of people that do that.
They don't. So what type of route do they have in Lee Summit? It's a commuter route.
Yeah.
It's a one-route thing, so it's not...
So there's only like three or four stops on that route?
Yeah, it's not near what you receive as, as a community.
Okay, I, I really do not have, I don't, I really challenge anybody in this room to give me a, a solid number to say, this many people got off the bus who lived in Raytown, this many people got off the bus who lived in Kansas City. Because I want to see how much we're paying for, and I don't see that.
I would not be able to give you that number at this time. That would take a significant study and would come at cost.
Do you have an additional question now?
Not at this time.
All right, we're going to move on to Ms. Garza, please.
Thank you. Missy, can you remind us, how much did we put in our budget for actual public transportation?
This year, for the ATA contract, I think I put in the budget about approximately $129,000. Yes, $129,000.
Thank you.
So we would have to do a budget amendment even if we were to adopt the contract, so we could fund the rest of this fiscal year alone, but yes. We anticipated a slight increase, but nothing like what we're seeing right now.
Right. Do, do we kind of have a guesstimation of what that would be?
What I have remaining, what I have remaining is approximately $34,000, I believe, and it all depends on which options you all direct staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Bussker?
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, it, it looks like there's approximately 18 stops that are actually in Kansas City that borders, borders Raytown. And there's approximately 18 stops within the city of Raytown that borders Raytown. That's with Route 28. So approximately the same number that borders, borders our city are in Kansas City that are actually in Raytown, since, since Kansas City and Raytown kind of flip over at about 75th Street there. And it looks like, and, and to fund those 18 would be $76,892 per year for Route 28. And the other route, 63, looks like there's approximately seven stops that, that they make in Raytown. And there's probably others that border Raytown there that you make as well, I'm sure, because you get on the other side by Briwood in that area, and it doesn't show that, of course, but there are stops, I'm sure, there in Kansas City, they're close. So, can I show what we're talking about?
I think I understand the, the line of questioning, and I want to caution that the, we do not charge based on a stop. It's charged on the mileage spent within Raytown and the hours of operation. And there, there's a decent amount of math, but it honestly just boils down to the cost per hour and cost per mile of time spent within the boundaries of your municipality. So I want to be a little cautious about saying we're charging per stop because that is not the funding model that we operate on.
Sure. So to provide that additional service that we have been getting there would be approximately $130,000 a year extra out of our pockets, since Kansas City doesn't want to fund any of that. And then in addition to that, if we funded the Flex, the Flex thing per year, we're talking about an additional $123,759 per year also. So, so about $124,252,000 for the Flex and the additional routes from number 63 and 28 per year would be our cost.
Oh, gotcha.
Versus, versus the Iris alternative, which I think is a great alternative for us. It's less, it's less for us, it's less money, it provides a lot more service, it provides transportation to the airport, it provides transportation outside of Raytown. The Flex goes approximately from the old Blue Ridge Mall, I think, over to the old Bannister Mall, so it doesn't, it's a little bit in Kansas City on both ends and pretty much in Raytown other than that. So the Iris service looks like it would be very beneficial to us for less money than what, a lot less money than we've been paying for the Flex service. And as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to provide the Iris service and fund it solely and drop the Flex service and let Kansas City, let you all do what you want to do with Route 28 and 63, and, you know, Kansas City may have a change of heart about that, I don't know. Right now, they don't charge any fare for their services, right?
All of KC ATA fixed route services are currently zero fare.
Zero. Right.
Is that a motion?
So, so the people that are utilizing that, those approximate 18 stops for 28 along the Raytown border that are in Raytown are not paying any fare right now. Is that correct?
No, and nobody on any fixed route service operated by the KCATA pays any fare.
And they're not paying, and those that are on Route 63 are not paying any fare, which approximately seven of those, but up to Raytown.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Well, in my, my humble opinion, I think we need to fund the Iris thing and just drop the rest of it. And I think that would be the best thing for our citizens. It would be, I think we'd just absolutely drain our transportation fund if we try to fund all of this, and we need that for other things, certainly. It isn't just for this. It assists in, you know, maintaining our roads and a lot of other things, so that would be my, what I feel like...
Are you making a motion, sir?
We should do. I will make a motion that we do that.
Okay. Motion. Ms. Henry, do you have the motion?
It's my understanding that his motion is to fund Iris at $112,000 for July 1st, 2024 through October 2025?
That's correct, and it would be at a rate of $84,000 a year, so that's from July 1st to October 2025, $112,000. That's correct.
Is there a second?
Garza, the second.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion on...
I have a quick question, not necessarily related to the motion, I'm good there. My question more is around the fact that, so we're locking in this rate. If Kansas City continues with their zero fare and not funding, then I'm assuming, like we're doing now, a lot of the municipalities are going to have to eventually pick up that cost because you can't run transportation with no income coming in, I mean, that's just reality. And so I just kind of want to know, like, what does KCATA's plans down the road, what are they looking at to fill in that void of the dollars they're missing from Kansas City?
Sure, there's a, there's a couple of different answers to that question. The first thing that I want to say, and Missy brought it up first, was the, the cost related, whether there's a fare or not, doesn't change dramatically. It, it doesn't change at all. That's basically just the cost per mile, cost per hour. There are, as far as answering the question regarding, what are we planning to do moving forward? Each community has their own contract with us and gets their own service. If Kansas City, Missouri were to drop out completely, service could end in Kansas City, Missouri, and we would continue having a community partnership with other communities that wanted to do it. That's not in the plan, that's just an example. As far as looking forward into the future regarding fares, all community partners are, have spoken to KCATA about their desire, whether they want to maintain zero fare, or whether they want, whether they want to bring fares back. That led to us beginning and completing a phase of a study that looks, one, what were the impacts of zero fare? The good, the bad, the ugly, and what, what are we missing from that? So what's that? So what's that revenue that we're missing? I do want to pause there for a second and say that that's only about eight to ten percent of a, an agency's total budget is the revenue they recover for fare. So no transit agency in America is paying for their service solely off of the fare that that service generates. So then, moving forward beyond that, it's pretty much decided based on community, we would like things to go forward as, you know, a united region, rather than piecemealing communities, because that's going to be very difficult for a rider to understand if, okay, things are zero fare in Kansas City, but there is a fare in this community and this community, that's going to break the entire system down. So one of the things that are happening at an executive level at the ATA is moving forward with that fare study and having conversations. We've engaged with Kansas City, Missouri so far about how we go moving forward. There was an ordinance that was passed by the Kansas City Council, Kansas City, Missouri Council, that is directing the KCATA to come back with ideas regarding what things look like in the future. You know, what is, what are the impacts of zero fare? What does a functional zero fare look like? What does fully bringing a fare back? What is the timeline? What are the costs of that? So we're engaged in that process right now. I think I gave you way too long of an answer.
No, and with all due respect, I used to be on the advisory committee for KCATA, so I'm fully aware of how your budget works. And even if you don't have the money coming in from fare, it's still, you have to make adjustments in your budget, you still have overhead costs, you still have your bus drivers and staff that you have to pay, you still have to, you know, maintain your fleet.
Yes, absolutely correct.
Just trying to gain clarification.
Yeah, my apologies.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
Real quick, so if we do Iris and do not do number twenty-eight, my understanding is that Iris will still service and take riders not only within Raytown, but also within Kansas City, Missouri?
Correct.
Gladstone, Riverside, and Liberty.
Correct.
So what would they miss not having the twenty-eight, Bus Route twenty-eight?
So there's, there's a couple of things, I think, that they would miss. One, having fixed route is, I think, a mark of a very healthy and forward-moving community. There are obviously not every, a fixed route isn't always the right choice for a community. And I think at the end of the day, that is obviously you all's decision, and I think you guys are doing the right thing by looking at, at all sides of this. They will be able to pick up. They might have to wait a certain amount of time, but again, they already do have to, to wait on those fixed route services. And so I think what, what's mostly missing is I think it's kind of going potentially in the wrong direction for a community. That's my personal opinion, not the opinion of the KCATA, but just one of a person who's been in transit for a long time. But like I said earlier, not every community, a fixed route isn't right for every single situation. And so that's why you all are here that gets to make the choice for what is best for your community. And if you believe that's Iris, then KCATA is here to support you in making sure that that happens in the best way possible.
So what, what I think I hear you saying is that what we would miss out on is just the flexibility of having that Flex route?
Of the, the fixed route. You'll still, so there's still flexibility built in to Iris. Some of the issues that potentially we have with Iris is there are capacity issues that happen sometimes. If there's a larger event, Iris gets bogged down in the same way that you might be used to seeing Uber getting bogged down, or Lyft, or Z-Trip, or something like that. That's not an issue with the fixed route transportation. But of course, those are normally isolated events. When we're aware of those events coming, oftentimes, we can plan with the community about how we can ramp up service with Iris. So there is flexibility with Iris. And honestly, Iris is the more flexible option. There are just capacity issues with Iris. And as far as service goes, Iris, it might not look at it based on the cost, but on a cost-per-rider basis, Iris is not as efficient. You get more service, you have more service available through fixed route. Might not always be used, but there's more service available and more opportunity for growth on the fixed route side, rather than on the micro-transit, which is what Iris is.
Mr. Walters, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Would it be possible to get a map showing the routes, proposed routes in Kansas City?
Sir, can you, a map match? I didn't understand.
Something similar to this, this is what Route twenty-eight looks like?
Yeah.
Because I had one in Kansas City showing me the routes in Kansas City. Would it be possible to get that?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I would request that.
So just a, a map showing all routes in Kansas City, Missouri, and municipal boundaries?
Yeah. If somebody jumps on a bus in Kansas City, there's no fare, am I correct?
No KCATA-operated fixed route services have a fare?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Van Bussckert?
I'll try to make it quick. Well, certainly would be the best option for us to have those fixed routes. And, and we would have the option later to add those back in if things change to a point where we feel like it would be beneficial for us to do that, and it would be monetarily sound for us to do that. So that, that option's always there, so hopefully maybe some changes will be made. But I think right now, hate to, hate to use the word extorting, but it's kind of like Kansas City is trying to extort money from us to, to do what has been, has been part of our, the service that we've had. And so I, that's why I made the motion I made, and I, at this point in time...
One minute, sir.
That's our best option. Thank you.
All righty. We have a motion on the table. Mr. Van Bussckert first, Garza second. Do you call the roll? Please, Ms. Henry.
Alderman Van Bussckert?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Kuzak?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Passes?
All right. Just want to make sure it's clear that, that motion is for us to staff to go back and negotiate with them and bring that back to you. So you'll be seeing that in the near future. July one is their dates, is that correct? July? So you'll be...
Mayor Proton, a question was asked, what are we negotiating? We do have other terms and provisions within the contract, though we'll need to make sure they're very clean to speak to the full term that we're talking about. It might not be the price, but it'd also be the term of service and things. So I just wanted to clarify what, what the contract would entail. So that's what we'll be bringing back to you in the next Alderman meeting, hopefully a contract that speaks to all the terms and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, I appreciate my time with you tonight.
Thank you. All right, we are, motion to adjourn, please? Second? Okay. Let's do this by affirmation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we, this meeting is closed at seven oh nine.